Welcome, everybody, to Bedford City Council Meeting, April 18, 2022. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk call a roll.
Spinks? Here. Janudas?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse Mayor Kochi from tonight's meeting? By Spinks, second by Janudas. Call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, council, you have the minutes, approval of the minutes for work session, March 21st, 2022. Any correction or additions? You see none? And a motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Saunders. Clerk call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And the regular meetings of March 21st, 2022. Any corrections? And a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janudas. Clerk call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
I don't think I was at that meeting, was I?
March 21st, you were, yeah.
Yeah, I was, okay, yes.
Okay, you have the approval of the minutes of the work session of April 4th, 2022. Have a motion? Or, sorry, any corrections, additions? A motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Saunders, we had that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Clerk call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, the regular meeting of April 4th, 2022. Any corrections, additions? Motion for acceptance by Janudas, second by Spinks. Clerk call a roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, have you a presentation here presented tonight? By, I'm gonna have Sandy Spinks, Councilwoman Sandy Spinks, do the presentation tonight for us. I don't have anything in front of me, except for the Ohio Intensive Creative Aging Initiative.
That's where it is.
How's that?
It's good.
Okay.
This was probably one of the funnest things that I was, had the honor to be involved with. And it was real exciting to be able to bring this to Bedford so many times, and I've said it 100 times. A lot of times, our town gets overlooked for things from the Art and Culture Board, for different things, enrichment programs. It really brings not a quality of life, but just enhances a lot. So Chilladash has been a godsend to our city. Be able, we've talked, we've talked over the years of trying to bring some art enrichment programs to here. So this was, this grant was made possible by Chilladash. And also with Sarah Gonati, who at the Recreation Center, Will, I cannot pronounce his name at the Librarian, as he's not here. It was a collaborative thing, there were several different things. Shilla put the program together. She can explain to you a little bit more, I'm gonna get best part of it, and then Shilla can explain. Sarah, I'm gonna have you come up first. And when I told Sarah, this is a certificate of appreciation from the city of Bedford. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express recognition and appreciation to Sarah Gonati, who is the Recreation Coordinator at Allen Woodwreck Center, for all her help with the Ohio Intensive Creative Aging Initiative Grant. That's a lot to say. She helped bring this program for the senior citizens and the children ages, grades 3rd through 5th to the city of Bedford. The mayor of Bedford City Council wishes to thank you. So Sarah was kind of behind the scenes, she had to go to class to do this. I told her, asked her to come, she goes, well, I didn't really do much. Well, you did, because without her, this wouldn't have happened. Because hopefully, by doing this, she's gonna be involved, she's got some really good ideas to bring things. It's so important with our children and our seniors, because you're talking beginning of life, and at the end of life, when you come, and they learn from each other. This workshop was just so much fun. So, yeah. So Sarah, thank you very much. And you can see, too, we have all the characters. And like I said, I'm gonna have Shilla Dash come up, and she can kind of explain a little bit more of what I went in. It was a four-week workshop, I guess?
Eight.
Six weeks. Eight weeks. Oh, wait!
Eight, nine, ten minutes.
We're working. You see, I had so much fun, I missed one, I had so much fun. So Shilla, I'm gonna have you come up. And you're gonna get close, I talk really loud. So again, this is the same thing, just, we appreciate Shilla so much of working with Sarah and Will at the Librarian, bringing this program to our city.
I'm just so happy we got to do it. And thank you, Sandy, councilperson, Ward 1, and all my friends on the council. It's been a wonderful honor meeting Sarah. This is an Ohio Arts Council brand, and other collaborators. But, did you want to ask some of the people? Thank you again, this is very touching.
I want to appreciate, I want to thank you, to the people that, some of the group that's here, Xavier and Xavier from Shaker Heights. So it was pretty cool, because we had So actually, Xavier number one, was Daniel in the play, and she can kind of give you a little tidbit of that.
The other? The voice.
The voices.
The voice.
So it was pretty cool, because of COVID, we weren't able to actually do the puppet show. So Shilla worked so hard on this. She recorded each and every one of us, the characters, we came up with the characters, and she recorded the voices, and then she put it all together. And so, when we finally got to see the end product, she even did music to it and everything. And she can tell you, we're gonna be able to see that.
We'll have another, I'm for the Zoom video. If anyone would like to come to our next Zoom video to see this, it's like 10 minutes. It's got outtakes with interviews with all of the puppeteers and their artistic process, and how they thought about working with an intergenerational group, which I think was the the golden nugget of the whole program. And yes, it was arts, but it was intergenerational, and I laughed so hard, and I needed it. I just needed a laugh, you know? So, thank you so much. Do you want to have the interview? Thank you to our puppeteers. Show their puppets, and tell us. Use your voices, so we can hear your voices, say the name of your puppet and what the role it was, if you guys don't mind.
Boo Boo, okay.
Quickly.
Come on.
Okay, Xavier, Xavier. Oh, good, I want to see this. It's so amazing, guys, thanks for coming. Name your puppet.
So my puppet is named Daniel. He is one of the main characters in the story. And he's like the friend of the librarian.
Who's missing? Who is Sandy?
Who's Sandy?
Give one of your lines, sing one of your line songs.
One of my lines is, "Where's the librarian?" And I say it two times.
Where was the librarian?
Uh, she was in the carnival, which is her favorite place.
And what was she doing?
Uh, she was cleaning up all the trash. And if you ever watch the movie, uh, she gives like the speech about how cleaning up the trash is saving our world.
That's right.
Isn't that nice? Thank you, Daniel, Xavier, Xavier. Okay, we see that.
So Michael was the ticket master, who was, um, so Eve was at the beginning of the carnival scene. And they were asking him, like, where Sandy was. And then, so, after that, he kind of helped look for her and find her. So he's kind of just like a side character, and not really like part of the main story. But he kind of plays like a mediocre role.
What's the last line? What's the last line? I was like, I answered. I don't even remember, I was Oh, yeah.
His last line is, "You forgot to pay for your tickets."
They came up with all their dialogue, which is the end of the whole story, so that was the fun of it.
And thank you, parents, for giving them here. Okay, Maryland. So the whole, the beginning of it was coming up with a concept. Where the, where this was gonna take place, so it was a whole production. And then, each and every one of us came up with our, well, together, we came up with what, where it was gonna be, who the characters were gonna be. So everybody kind of came up with their characters, and we wrote the whole play, and then put it together. So their parts were kind of, they were grouchy. So Bobby, what was your, what's taking so long?
What is your one?
Nobody works here? So you can see, these puppets were, we started out with newspaper, so they had this paper shape, and noticed the likeness of the hair. So every part of it was, and of course, recycled little bottles underneath. So the clothes, everything, every part of this puppet was constructed by the person, the character. So everybody made their puppet, so it was really cool. And again, Shilla, thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Everybody that was in it, they were great. These are fun things that, as a council person, that get to get and to bring into our city. And I know that Sarah and Shilla will be working on more things to work with the seniors and the kids. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's school night. Take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Watch out for that sun with them shades. Laro. A snow one. Ready? That's all right. All right, before we get to, we have no old business, before we get to reports, I just, on another note here, White Mayor Kochi is not here today, his mother passed away last Friday. So our thoughts and prayers to him and his family. That's the reason why Stan isn't here, so I'm filling in for him today. So, just going to reports, city manager, Mike Malice.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple things, real quick, some announcements, I want to commend Jennifer Kuzma and Clint Valer and Sean Francis. They were successful in our recent tree grant application, which was made through Chi-Hauger County Planning. So that was a $50,000 grant, and that will cover the cost of the city planting over 100 trees throughout town. We've already identified a lot of the side streets, residential streets, where the trees were taken down. Those will be replaced. But in addition to that, we identified through various parks, I think there were over 40 trees in some of our parks, some at the community center that had to be taken down. We're gonna be replanting all of those. What we're looking to do is, from a scheduling point, is we're gonna be working with the contractor that will be performing the planting, which is a local contractor, and we're seeing if they can all be done in the spring. If not, we're gonna split it up and do half of the plantings in the spring, and the other half would take place in the fall. So kudos to the staff members on that. As well as, and fingers crossed, I don't want to jinx, I don't want to jinx this, but I'm gonna mention it. Our grant application for $150,000, and then a separate one for $50,000, was recommended for approval to county council, those are CDBG and CDSG grant applications. It was placed on first reading last week, we anticipate those being approved. And those two grants will help cover the cost of full renovations to the poolhouse. Poolhouse is somewhat new, it was built in the 60s, but it's due for a refresh. So it is our intent to refresh that, and we're gonna utilize the county grant dollars to do so. So fingers crossed, county council will approve that. It is too early to say when that actual construction would take place. Most likely, a lot of the legwork will be up to through pool season, and then once the pool closes for the year, it'll be kind of demo time. That's our tentative schedule, but we'll know more in the coming weeks, once that gets finalized. In regards to Parks and Recreation, I want to mention, last month, our director, Aaron Fatch, had indicated to us that he was gonna be leaving. Aaron's last week was a couple of weeks ago, he took a position out in Avon Lake. We wish him well, he did a great job during his five years here. Really positioned the department, you know, moving forward and tackling some of the initiatives that we wanted to tackle. And like I said, we wish him well. With that being said, we believe, and Aaron concurred, as far as replacing his position, you know, the individual that was best prepared for that was in-house, and that was our assistant, Mike Callahan. We promoted him. Mike was promoted a couple of weeks ago officially, to the new Parks and Recreation Director. He's excited, and I have full confidence in him, and he's gonna do good. We got a lot of great projects coming up that he's excited about, and we are currently advertising for the assistant position down at the Parks and Recreation. In addition to, there is a number of positions available, a lot of part-time seasonal positions. Anybody interested, please go online, visit our website. Assistance in the service department, there's some opportunities within police, Parks and Rec. Take a look at that, we definitely have those to fill. Staff completed our road assessment a couple of weeks back. We're now working to identify which of those roadways are gonna be included in this year's road resurfacing program. We're also looking at those roads that were at the top of the list, that are in the most need of repair. But we're also taking into account which of those streets, we're assessing the water lines as well. If those water lines are aging, and we've been having issues with those, it makes sense to do the line, and then come back right away and do the roadway. So we're gonna identify that. Hopefully, we'll be able to do a couple of waterline projects, and then follow it up with multiple street projects. And we will have that to city council in hopefully, the next 30 to 45 days, to plan bidding that project. I did share with city council last week that we did send correspondence to Chi-Hauger County regarding the condition of Solon Road. So that is a county roadway, it's in much need of repair, complete resurfacing. It's a cactus roadway, it is going to be very expensive. But again, that's a county roadway, and we believe they should get that at the top of their list. Our water department, we are performing a sounding of our system, we work with an outside company. We go around, and the company actually helps us identify leaks. We do check various valves, if those valves need to be replaced, we do so. You may see a 4x4 kind of small utility vehicle going around town. That is the sounding company, the equipment that they, or the vehicle they have. And they are assisted with our water department staff, so they're going around town looking for breaks. We'll identify those, and internally, we will make those repairs. We do have our Broadway project that we've been speaking with. Our pre-construction meeting is scheduled for this week, where the city administration will be meeting with the contractor. And we'll be identifying and answering a lot of the specifics regarding that project. When it's going to start, how long is the project going to take, hours of operation, all of the specifics. Once we get that information, we'll then work to schedule a public meeting, specifically for a lot of the businesses and the residents in the area of Broadway. Obviously, D2A routes are gonna, D2A routes are going to be a big topic. We'll have all of that information at that public meeting. We'll also have our safety forces will be there, the contractor will be there to answer questions. We hope to have that meeting scheduled early May, so look for that notice to go out. And lastly, I just want to mention, brief update, we've been talking for, actually, it's been almost a year since council started passing legislation regarding Tinkers Creek Commerce Park. City officially took ownership of roughly 30 acres in that industrial park last week. We own it, and we're now in a due diligence period with two end users. One, an existing Bedford business, and another, a developer, that is going to be purchasing that property from us. Obviously, freeing up the debt that really hurt the property over the last 15, 20 years. It's why we haven't seen any development. Frank, Jen, Jennifer Kuzma, John, they did a tremendous job. There'll be some additional legislation that has to take place over the coming month, as far as the finance mechanism and us working with Chi-Hauger County, but a lot of the legwork was completed. We've taken ownership, and hopefully, we'll see development there in the near future. End of report.
Thank you. Hall Director, John Montello.
Just briefly, condolences to Mayor Kochi and his family, and good luck to Aaron Fatch and Mike Callahan on his new position, and I also want to commend Jen Kuzma and Clerk Valer, they do a great job. End of report.
Thank you. Finance Director, Frank Ambosie.
Yeah, also, my condolences to Stan and his family, on the passing of his mother. Hers and her thoughts are with them. The, currently, we have Jennifer here tonight, she'll be, she's working already on the tax budget for next year. We're at that point in time, where we're in three different years. Her and Allison, who Allison Chance will be, is already our Assistant Finance Director. And myself, I'm working on last year's numbers, finishing up that for the reporting of 2021. So we're quite busy at this point, and then also in line with that, we got today is the magic day of filing tax returns. So we had a lot of returns filed this weekend, a lot of processing to do in the next week or two. And so, but the phone has been ringing off the hook, too, and it's going pretty smoothly of getting paperwork in, getting it out, getting bills to everybody. They did a very, very good job this year of coordinating that, and a ton of returns are coming in. So again, tonight's the last night for filing, and we'll go from there. At this point in time, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Onto council reports, before we get started, Sandy, you're looking for some new characters. I got Malice Montello and Ambosie. We call the Godfathers. All kinds of characters that are moving.
Are they gonna pick up trash?
Yes. All right, getting to council reports, Sandy Spinks.
Yeah, condolences also to Mayor Kochi and his family. I had the pleasure of knowing his mom real well, she was my ice cream buddy. She had a love for butter pecan ice cream, and during COVID, we couldn't go or do our little weekly visits to Mitchell's Ice Cream, so I would deliver it to the house. And it was always so sweet, and it reminded me of my grandmother. She would stand at the door, and she would wait until I was completely out of sight, and it just, it, you know, I don't have family up here, except my, my family, for my husband, which I'm very lucky for that. I've got a great in-laws and stuff. So very fond members, 94 years old, so she wouldn't, she wouldn't, she still was of sound mind, but nevertheless, Mayor Kochi had his mom around a long time, so that was good. My heart still breaks for him, because I know that it's hard, even you're never prepared for that. Bedford Historical Society, our annual meeting is going to be May 5th, as a Thursday, at La Casa Ballack Party Center. It is going to be $40 for members, that's dinner, and then if you're a non-member, you're, it will be $60, which will include your $20 membership fee. So if you're coming in a non-member, it's a great thing, we're looking for new members all the time, also looking for volunteers. So mark that on your calendars, that's usually a great thing going on. We just had our reverse rattle a couple of weekends ago, and that was well-attended, isn't it? I think we did pretty good on raising money for that. Let's see. I see Dot out there, welcome back, Dot, we haven't seen you in a while. Garden Club, first meeting this Thursday, first live meeting, they've been doing Zoom meetings, so I'm hoping I'm able to make that. Mike, are we still with trash cans that are left out two or three days? After, I know last week, I got a lot of good plants, and of course, I'm in my warden every day, pretty much. Of course, with it's windy, you know, they blow across the street, and they dump out and everything. The residents really can't help that, but the ones that just continue to leave those trash cans out for weeks and weeks.
We've tagged them, we've cited them, if there's some in particular, you know, send those over. We've responded to some that, through our online system, that have been sent over. If you have some regulars, we also send personalized letters to the home as well.
Okay.
There were a couple of properties last week, we actually ordered Kimball not to collect. There was some trash that was brought in, and then another one, there was construction debris that was left. So I think it was out an extra day or so, but ultimately, the property owner removed everything. But send me, send me some of those.
Also, what I just stopped and got it taken care of, so. Also, a reminder to new residents and the people that are moving out, if you're going to put a mattress out, make sure you wrap it, they will not pick it up if it's not. And then with the weather, you know, if it's raining or something, and it sits out there for a couple of days, it's pretty yucky. Also, a couple of new businesses coming in, and as a rule of thumb, if I don't announce about a new business coming in, it's because there's different things that they have to do, certificates, inspections, and all kind of stuff. Well, I don't announce it coming until all of that is done. Sometimes you'll see on the building, you'll see "coming soon" or something like that. Well, a lot of times, there's still a lot of things that have to be done before that. Fire department inspections, food, especially if there's food involved. So if I don't announce at a council meeting, it's because not everything is done. So I don't announce that a business is coming and grand opening, and then it does not open. With that said, I'd like to welcome the new business, Bedford Nutrition, the mayor, myself, and our Vice Mayor, Vic Lou Hardy, did a ribbon cutting there, it was kind of a sewn-together thing, but it happened. It was on the same day as the egg hunt, I missed it, that was quick this year. Now, there was a lot of kids, but it was raining.
Wasn't the best one.
No.
It was kitchen rats and ghosts. There were a lot, 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 lot of individuals signed up, which was great. And not to jump in, but the benefit of that is, by taking signups, we gather all that information to families, where we can then market other programs and other things that we're doing, and that's catching on by collecting that data. And it's one of the reasons why we're, you have to sign up for a lot of those activities down there, so we can continue to get more information out of it, what's happening.
And kudos again to the rec department for so much, I mean, they're really on the ball. It's going, doing a lot, just like this, this program that we just did with the puppet making program. That was made possible through Sarah going and getting their certificate, and I know that her and Shilla could be going to Columbus to do some other things on the Creative Aging Initiative. So, let's see, what else did I have? Oh, we do have, there is Singleton's Beauty Salon, coming soon, but they're not quite ready. Oh, we do have, there is Singleton's Beauty Salon coming soon, but they're not quite ready yet. So won't be announcing, hopefully in a couple more weeks. They still have some stuff that they need, some inspections they need to do also. Broadway Diner, talk to Joe, they still, right now, they're working on employees, which is kind of a hard thing for everybody right now. So do have some exciting stuff that's going on, the business is coming into Walmart. Mike, do you have, you want to share a little bit? I know they're still working on stuff. I know they're working with their architect on some stuff. So far as the opening date, we don't have one yet.
Yeah, I don't have an opening on that. They're still working with our building department and fire department, so.
So we're kind of like, good things coming. And don't forget that Friday is Earth Day. So do something good for our earth. End of report.
Thank you. While I do this, horn two.
Thank you. Well, my condolences, of course, to the mayor, the death of his mother. Mother was a great lady. I grew up on the same street with them, and she was just really wonderful as a kid growing up. She was very kind to me, and she was a wonderful neighbor. One time I went over there and had a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, and I'm telling you, there must have been two inches of peanut butter. You must be buying this stuff by the 55 gallon truck. That's my, that's my special memory of her. I'm not sure if she actually made the sandwich or not. I want to say also that I have to commend Sheila Dos because she's just a wonderful person. And, and the whole idea of an intergenerational project, I think is just really, really a cool thing. But I, I know Sheila Dos from playing music. And you may have seen her in various groups in the square, playing music and whatnot, which she's, you know, excellent at. She also was involved in an outfit called the Roots of American Music, where they would go into schools and do, do music things and explain the, the roots of American music. And it was just such a great organization because as the schools provide less extracurricular activities and they shrink their arts and music programs, this was an opportunity to have children really immerse themselves in music for a short period of time, for a day or something, and really satisfy a tremendous need to, for, for kids to be involved in music. So I have to commend Sheila Dos, she's a great person and really a treasure in the neighborhood. Yeah, Earth Day coming up, I just hope everyone, we talked about it, initiatives to go out and pick up trash. Earth Day's a big deal, and we should really, the protection of the earth, the fertility of our soil, the air and pollution and whatnot, is every bit as important to the health of our community as potholes and people going through stop signs and all the normal stuff. So I hope people get out there and do their part this weekend, I know I will. Concerning the, one of the things here, you'll notice in under new business, has to do with the equalization of wards, where some of the wards were bigger than others, and there was an effort that was made to try to equalize the wards. Concerning the equalization of wards, there is a concern that our charter specifies equalization by voter strength instead of population. And this equalization effort utilized census data as opposed to voter strength data from the Board of Elections. However, the wards were indeed made more equal in voter strength, which I believe satisfies the intent of our charter. Another one going, reading through here is titled fireworks. And understand, when you come to the mic and ask for something, you might just receive a reply, thank you, and next. But everything is really scrutinized and paid attention to. And I have to say, after Mr. Duber came up, requested we should do something about the fireworks issue with the state legalizing fireworks. We had copies of legislature presented to us virtually the next day. So I think it's important to realize that what you come up and say makes a difference. And you see here that we're, we're amending our fireworks ordinance due to many, many requests and complaints. The City of Bedford means to, and I believe will happen, to continue its ban on the discharge of fireworks. And while I fully understand the nuisance and safety issues involved, regardless of this ordinance, people will surely blow off firecrackers, especially on the Fourth of July, as they always have, as it is an artifact of our culture and holiday traditions. Although I don't oppose this ordinance, for the sake of those most greatly affected and adversely affected, I believe it would be preferable to follow the lead of the state of Ohio and at least allow for the discharge of certain small size fireworks at very restricted times on those special days. However, there obviously are some logistical difficulties of deciding what's a fire, small firecracker, what's acceptable and not, so that, that is, that is a difficulty. Basically being that this ordinance is scarcely enforceable to the extent we have all come to know. You have to realize that this is just an extension of what has always been as far as the prohibition of shooting off firecrackers. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I go next, so I just want to congratulate us to Mike Callahan for taking over or being appointed for our new Recreation Director. Mike's going to do a good job for us there. And, and we've had some sad days here in the last couple of months between Paul and Mr. Saunders and now Stan's mom. We've had a rough go here, so hopefully this is it for a while. So who's next on the list here? Jeff Asbury.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Again, condolences to the entire Kochy family. I don't believe I ever met Stan's mom, but it turns out that his mom and my mom shared a birthday, so condolences. Rest in peace. Just some things, the computer and household hazardous waste roundup started today, runs through Saturday this week, nine, sorry, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM today through Friday. There will be a Saturday drop off from 9:00 AM to noon. And then again, next week, April 25th through the 29th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that's at the Service Garage 100 Solon Road. You can check the website and see everything that they're collecting. Chipper Service, first week in May, May 2nd through the 6th. Make sure you call to get on the list. Number there is 440-735-6583. This coming Saturday, the 23rd of April, Vinyl Grove, the Vinyl Groove Record Store Day. This is a big to-do in the record industry, and luckily, we've got one of the, one of the very popular record stores around the area. They're going to have some hundreds of limited release vinyl. They're going to have some ticket prizes to give away, and of course, some goodies from Sweet Birdie. So if you're into the vinyl, go down and see them. It's, actually, the line starts probably at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, and it goes all the way down Broadway, so it's a pretty big event. What's next? I just saw this before I came in tonight. I don't know the group, but they're called Slow Roll Cleveland, and it's a bicycle group. This Sunday, the 24th, they're meeting at our gazebo downtown at 1:00. And they're going to be doing an eight and a half mile ride throughout, I don't know exactly where because they didn't give a map, for Earth Day. So again, the name of the, the group is Slow Roll Cleveland. You can find them on Facebook, and they meet at our gazebo Sunday at 1:00 PM. Mike, was there any dates? I still have people getting me for the citywide garage sale, nailed down a date.
They have not nailed down a date. They have not nailed down a date. There were a couple of other programs that they're waiting to schedule, but our, our calendar of events should be finished by the end of the week. So I don't want to commit to anything today, but I'll give it to you.
We're committing, we're going to have a garage sale day here. What else do I, oh, still me. So Bedford Downtown Alliance, fourth annual Chocolate Walk will be held Saturday, May 14th, from noon to 5:00. Just a brief explanation, enjoy the day exploring the downtown, collecting chocolate themed items from chocolate stops and grabbing bites to eat and drink at our local establishment. This is an annual fundraiser for the Bedford Downtown Alliance, and the proceeds funding BDA's movement of revitalizing the Bedford Downtown District. So so far, it's going really well. We've got eight or nine volunteers that are helping us, we can always use more. So if you're so inclined, get ahold of the Bedford Downtown Alliance. A summary so far, 25 businesses and area groups are participating as chocolate stops. So if you choose to pay for your ticket, you will get at least 25 pieces of chocolate. There are more being added this week. As of 4/16, it was two days ago, Saturday, estimated total value of all prizes, $3,200. There are some really nice prizes that were donated this year, so we hope to see everybody down there. Tickets are $20 for the main, I'll just read it because it's easier that way. Buy one walk admission ticket and you're automatically entered into the drawing for the top three prizes with the grand prize of a freezer Midtown style bicycle sponsored by Gojira Chemical and the Broadway Cyclone. I believe it's an $800 bicycle, so that's the top prize. Buy one prize pool ticket and you get an initial entry into the drawing of the top three prizes and the grand prize, prize pool is, she gives an explanation, the prize pool is like a combination of a yellow duck and a kiddie pool carnival game and a wine pool. So if you get the prize pool, you're guaranteed of at least a $20 minimum prize. And there are a bunch of prizes donated this year. So it's going to be a good time, Saturday, May 14th, noon to 5:00. Get your tickets before they sell out. That's it, end of report.
Thank you. Donald Saunders.
That was first last time, no, last. I first want to express my condolences also to Stan for the passing of his mother. Having had my father only pass away just a couple of weeks ago, I know what he's going through. I've known Mrs. Kochy for decades. She lived in my ward for quite some time too, so. But it's always tough when you lose a parent. They may be up in their 90s, but it's still a tough time to lose a parent because they've been around for so doggone long. Anyway, a quick question for Mike. Are we going to do anything about the telephone poles that we've had clobbered on Broadway? They're up to what, four or five, and we've had two or three on Center Road now? Are we using any extra patrols? Are we going to put up signage or do something to try to slow these people down, even though most of them were intoxicated, which really doesn't help? But we've had quite a rash here in just the last year, actually, you know, on both streets.
Yeah, we can't, we can't remove the poles, the First Energy's poles. Obviously, they've been notified, you know, the last two accidents, the significant accidents, we can speculate, but I don't want to give an official cause yet. Clip the pole, fire hydrant, and multiple vehicles on the auto mile. Obviously, dealing with insurance and things like that, which we are. You know, we've had our, some of those hotspots, we've had our patrols there. Fortunately, in these two circumstances, I don't, that wouldn't have stopped what ultimately caused those accidents.
It just seems like they're appearing on Center Road and Broadway, although we've had several on Northfield too. People need to slow down and drive properly, whether it's distracted driving in one way or another, cell phone, drinking, or whatnot. People have to learn responsibility. Another quick thing, on Ennis Hill, about three quarters of the way up, there's a telephone pole there. I don't know if somebody hit that pole and caused it to crack, but the pole is cracked and it may become a hazard if somebody can take a look at it and see. It might just be an old pole.
Okay, we could take a look at it. I know they, we did reach out to First Energy following last meeting. And I know I indicated when it came up that our staff was in communication with them, but they did finally get out and clean up the debris from when they switched out a pole further down near Talbot, so we get a pretty quick response, we'll head and check that.
It wouldn't surprise me if the gas company hadn't backed into it a few times when they were doing the gas line on Center Road, because they scratched up the road and tore up the whole hillside for the roadway itself. But that's here and there, because it's unlikely we'll ever get them to work on that. But that pole is starting to come apart. So I have one other thing, I can't remember what it was. Anyway, I'll get to you on it. Take care, thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the new business, sir. We're going to get in a little more detail on each one once we pass these. Everything's going to be on first reading tonight because we don't have enough of us up here to vote on things, pass things, I should say. So everything's on first reading. Resolution number 2580-22.
A resolution declaring the month of April as child abuse awareness month and declaring an emergency.
Have a motion for first reading by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Louhardi?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9962-22.
Authorizing the city manager to participate in the ODOT winter contract for 2022, 2023 for the purchase of road salt and declaring an emergency.
To get on first reading, motion for first reading by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Louhardi?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9963-22.
Authorizing the purchase of one Concord Northeastern, or Easters, MPS 1055 CS, heavy duty chassis mounted, multipurpose granular material spreader, and a heavy duty angling snowplow through the state of Ohio term schedule contract and declaring an emergency.
Motion for first reading by Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Louhardi?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9964-22.
An ordinance redividing the City of Bedford into six wards as narrowly equal in numbers of persons as possible, establishing the boundaries of the wards and certifying the same to the Board of Elections so they can correct their records.
Motion for first reading by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Louhardi?
Yes.
Asbury?
No.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9965-22.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Noronha Suns for emergency repairs to the sludge thickener tank at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Motion for first reading by Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Louhardi?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9966-22.
Another ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with advanced rehab technologies for additional emergency repairs to the sludge thickener, sludge thickener tank. tank at the wastewater treatment plant, declaring an emergency. It's a two-step process, basically.
Motion for first reading by Janudas, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-nine sixty-seven dash twenty-two.
An ordinance amending uh, a chapter fifteen nineteen entitled fireworks and declaring an emergency.
First reading by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, the presence of the hearing of citizens. Anybody wants to make a quick comment or have a, a question, please come up to the mic up front, state, state your name, your address.
Hello, I'm Madat Schwendy at five thirteen Lamson Avenue, and I'm representing the Bedford Garden Club this evening. Um, we are having our first real live in-person meeting this coming Thursday at seven o'clock, and you're all invited. So we have a great schedule. I'll be bringing, um, schedules when we get printed and then passing around to the folks. Um, we also have a plant sale coming up, same weekend as the Chocolate Walk. So I see this could be a really win-win for all of us, if we kind of like mesh our advertising. So our plant sale will be Friday, that would be May thirteenth, from about one o'clock in the afternoon to about seven in the evening, so that working people can come and spend money. And it will be at Ellen Woods Center this, this year too, a room, um, well, I think we're having the gym for that. Uh, so then that's Friday, and then Saturday, the fourteenth, we're open from ten until about two o'clock in the afternoon. So we have a, a good variety of plants coming, and if anybody wants to start some vegetables, it's hard to find vegetables this year. So if anybody wants to start any and, you know, donate them to, to garden club to sell, it would be appreciated. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott Martin, six thirty-five West Clendale. I don't know, Mike, uh, did a home removed on uh West Grace.
One eighty, I think.
The last house on the left there, they did a nice job. Unfortunately, one of the neighbors had a house fire. They drove through it and parked on West Grace on the grass, and towing company decided to help them pull the vehicles out of the mud. So we might need to send the crew over and get this smashed back down. Anyway, we've probably had some involvement in that, so.
Yeah, we, we actually, we, uh, we got a grant, a demo grant, and what happens is, I think we received the grant early last year, and there were a few houses, so the land bank, we, we authorized the land bank to act on our behalf. So the land bank then works to bid out various ones. So.
Oh, guys did a nice job. They had it seated, it shrouded.
That was, was rough.
Oh, yeah, that one was bad for years. And somebody decided just to drive right through it last week, and not his wheel marks this deep in it. And of course, on the hill, across the street in the grass, someone parked there. So the towing service made an easy thousand dollars pulling people out. So, thank you.
Any else? A motion for adjournment, by Spinks, second by Janudas. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.